So you can start recording now Heather. All right, I'll call the meeting to order. And before we go into the agenda, I would just like to acknowledge the, I guess, acknowledge the anniversary of the Humboldt tragedy that happened exactly today, two years ago. So I would say on behalf of all of council, our thoughts go out to the community of Humboldt. Cause I'm sure they're thinking about it today. So that was really unfortunate and, and we're thinking about them today. So moving into the agenda, it's going to be a little different this time because obviously the resolutions haven't been moved and signed and seconded by any counselors. So I'll call for a mover each time and a seconder. And you'll just put your hand up like this so I can see it in your screen. And the same thing goes with respect to the voting aspect when we're voting on the different items. So the first thing on the agenda is a resolution. And the resolution reads that the minutes of the regular council meeting held on March 9th, 2020, be adopted as circulated. So I'll call for a mover. Okay, Tim? And a seconder? April? I'll try to get all of you in, in here sometime today. All right, so that's the resolution. You hopefully have that in front of you or access to that set of minutes. And so you can tell me if you see any errors or omissions with respect to that set of minutes. Anyone? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Rick, Counselor George has his hand up.
Put your hand up? Put your hand up physically? Perfect. Okay, Kerry, thank you.
Mayor, Counselor George has his hand up, I believe.
Does he right now? I don't see it. Glenn, do you have your hand up? Counselor, Counselor George, can you hear me?
He fell asleep.
Yeah, apparently Counselor George can't hear me. Okay.
Heather, will you message him please?
Heather, can you hear us? Okay, I'm apparently Heather's not hearing us.
Yes, yes, I can hear you. We, I'm on mute. I'm just messaging him.
Okay, is he on mute maybe? No.
A guy can hear you, but I don't know who you're talking about.
Okay, we were talking to you earlier and it appeared that you couldn't hear us or you couldn't answer us, one of the two. So you can hear us fine now Glenn?
Now.
Okay. Yeah, we can hear you now. Okay.
I got my hand up.
We'll keep, yeah, we saw that. Okay, we'll keep going. It's gonna be a little bit interesting, but that's all right. Okay, we have no delegations tonight. We have no unfinished business. So we'll move into new business and communications. So I have a resolution and it reads as follows. That we approve the amendment to the 2020 utility capital budget to fund the over budget tender amount for the 700 block of Main Street, 300 Burrows Avenue East and 200 Saskatchewan Drive East Rear Lane Water Main Replacement Capital Projects. The over expenditure of $57,867 will be funded by deferring the Highway 3 waterline extension project, which had a budgeted amount of $112,413 to a future date. So before we go any further, I need a mover. So if somebody could, Counselor Terry? And a seconder? Counselor Benson? All right, any questions or comments with respect to this resolution?
Is this still gonna go ahead or is there gonna be a gap here now with Corona? Are they gonna be able to start?
So, City Manager, do you have any information for us with respect to that?
Yes, I do. So we met with our, our engineering firm out of Saskatoon, that's Friday, and we have another follow-up meeting this week. In all of the municipal contracts right now, we are putting a clause in which we can forward to council that covers off the logistics in dealing with this pandemic. So, so that I guess the answer to that is we're proceeding as follows right now. Should that change due to this pandemic developing further, will be covered off with a, with a clause in the contract of the award.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll make sure and send that out to everybody as a follow-up to the meeting.
Okay, thanks. No more questions from council? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Kerry, thank you. Next on the agenda, I have a resolution that reads as follows. We approve the appointment of Terry Sparks to represent the beautification committee on the art advisory committee with a term ending December 31st, 2020. Need a mover? Counselor Phillips? And a seconder, preferably Counselor Mitchell or George. Counselor Mitchell? Any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Kerry, thank you. Moving into general sundry communication items. We have three items in the top section. Any questions or comments with respect to any of those three items? Malford District Museum Annual Report or Minister Carr Government Relations, which, which is listing the 2020 education mill rates or the Waterworks Compliance Inspection Report. Any questions or comments on any of those? All right, let's move on to committee minutes and reports, moving into committee of the whole. I have a resolution that reads the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting held on March 9th, 2020, be adopted as circulated. Can I have a mover please? Counselor Phillips? A seconder? Counselor Holman? Any questions? Oh, I guess there is no questions, no, because that was a closed meeting. So I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Kerry, thank you. Moving into the Legislative and Finance Committee. I have a resolution that reads as follows. Whereas on March 11th, 2020, the World Health Organization declared the spread of COVID-19 a global pandemic, which will have a devastating impact on the local economy. Be it resolved that effective immediately, the city of Malford agrees to implement measures to provide temporary financial relief to our customers in the following manner. One, all utility disconnections will be suspended until September 30th, 2020. Number two, late payment charges will be suspended on all utility accounts until September 30th, 2020. Three, NSF charges on payments of property tax and utilities will be suspended until September 30th, 2020. Four, the tax penalty bylaw will be amended to provide property owners an additional three months to September 30th, 2020 to pay without incurring penalties on their 2020 current taxes. Number five, the tax penalty bylaw will be amended to suspend penalties on tax arrears from April 1st, 2020 to September 30th, 2020. And finally, number six, the tax enforcement process will be delayed for a three month period to June 30th, 2020 for the application of tax liens and the six month notice of arrears. I need a mover for that resolution. Counselor Mitchell and seconded by Counselor Holman. Any questions or comments with respect to that resolution? Counselor Terry, you have the floor.
Thank you, your worship. I take this information will be relayed in the news release.
City Manager?
Yes, that's correct. We'll, we'll be out to, to that tomorrow. Obviously, there's gonna be a scrum at the end of today as well.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
And I guess the one thing that I would just
Counselor Mitchell, you have the floor.
Thank you. Sorry, your worship. Through the discussions in the finance committee, this is just about, you know, delaying that financial impact for folks that are out of work. The expectation is, is that people that haven't been affected financially through their workplace being closed or whatnot, that they continue to proceed with tax payments as per usual. This just gives us the window that if you've been negatively affected with, with some of the public health orders that you're getting a little bit more time to make the payment. This is a deferral. It's not a forgiveness. This is just moving those deadlines, shifting the deadlines to give you the citizens a little more time to, to come up with the financial means to make their payments.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? City Manager, just a question for you. This kind of falls in line with other cities for sure. And what they're doing for their citizens, is that right?
Yes, that's confirmed.
Okay, anything else before we call for the vote? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Counselor George, are you in favor? Yes, okay. Thank you, Kerry. Next on the agenda is the Legislative, Legislative and Finance Report. City Manager, any comments?
No, I'll refer to the report as circulated and any questions, we could certainly answer at this time.
Okay, any questions from anybody?
Maybe.
Counselor Holman?
Yeah, I mean, the assessments that we get, the assessment role that we get from SAMA, I mean, that'll be based on a base date previous, but with everything that's happened recently with COVID-19, is SAMA doing anything to adjust reassessments or anything like that going forward?
Not, not that I'm aware of, not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, let's move on into Community and Protective Services Committee. I have a resolution that reads as follows. In accordance with zoning bylaw 2019-19, Table 10 through 1430, junk salvage and auto wrecking yards, we grant discretionary approval to Ben Hosier of Sask, Sask Steel to develop and operate a scrap metal and vehicle recycling facility on Lot 4, Block 115, Plan 82PA08046715 McDonald Avenue West, which is a discretionary use in an M2 heavy industrial district, subject to, in number one, installation of a solid three meter perimeter fence and perimeter trees generally conforming to the plans submitted in the development permit. And number two, compliance with all applicable municipal, provincial and federal acts and regulations. So I need a mover for that resolution. Counselor Phillips? And a seconder? Counselor George? Questions or comments with respect to that resolution? Counselor Mitchell?
Well, just to, for clarification, it's the highlighted, what's highlighted in pink there is what we're providing discretionary approval for, that 2.23 hectares? On the map?
That's correct.
Okay, anything else? All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Counselor George, are you in favor? Yes, everybody's in favor. Okay, Kerry, thank you. Unique experience anyway. All right. Let's move into the Protective Services Department's report. City Manager, any comments on that report?
Uh, thanks, your worship. No, nothing, nothing out of the ordinary. His report is circulated. If there is any questions, we can certainly do that. We do, we do have our EOC ready should, should this pandemic develop any further in our area, we need to activate it. Just so council is aware, we are, we are fully ready in that regard.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from council on any of those points in the Protective Services Report? Okay, let's move on to the Community Services Department's report. And again, City Manager?
Thanks, your worship. I'll circulate Director Lutz's report as is. And any questions, we can certainly answer those at this time.
Okay, any questions from council? Counselor Mitchell?
Just a question and maybe it's just due to timing, but you know, like some of those shutdowns that we do regularly, like for the pool, for example, we do a shutdown in September where we drain the pool and do maintenance and that sort of thing. I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity to utilize some of this downtime where we're closed, our facilities are closed to do some of that maintenance work. Just to utilize our staff that we're paying and, and to get ahead of some of that maintenance work while they're close to the public.
Yeah, you know, and it's my apology here, that's not included, but it would be a, a real quick jump in our pool right now as we drained it day two into the pandemic. So the shutdown is seven days in right now. We, we do have contractors, social distancing and completing some work in there right now. And the plans is evolved, this will be our only shutdown for the year. On the rank, on the rank side as well. And then of course, with the Kerry Victor Center being a backup building potentially for the SGA. You know, there's limited work in there, however, we are ready for that.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Maybe I might just have Director Lutz just comment. We're trying to put in as many support mechanisms as we can right now for the community. And I think it's important, all of council is aware of, we are working on a, on a, on a business resilience recovery communication with all of our local business. Brett, can you chime in please?
I can let council know that we set up a video conference call with a couple dozen of select industry leaders in our community and representing the different industries that are present there to have a discussion on how we can support our existing businesses. How we can make sure that as the, as the restrictions are likely to carry on for a number of weeks yet, that we need to make sure that the community continues to be serviced for important necessary services. And also how we can serve our surrounding community, in particular our agricultural producers that who have to get a crop in during this period of time. And so we're going to assist them in facilitating that and making sure the public's aware of how to access services while still maintaining the safety restrictions that have been put into place.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Counselor George, can you still hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay, just for a minute you disappeared, but now you're back. All right, so any other questions with respect to Community Services Report? All right, let's move on to Works and Utilities Committee. So I have a resolution that the minutes of the airport board meeting held on March 10th, 2020 be received. Can I have a mover please? Counselor Terry? And a seconder? Counselor Benson? So, if I remember right, Counselor Terry, you chaired that meeting, right? Do you have any comments about that or do we just go to questions?
No, a couple of highlights I can mention, your worship.
Sure.
We're looking at the hangar lease. We feel that the current hangar lease is outdated, so we'll be looking at a, at a method to, to increase that in the near future. There was an indication that pilots are not using their radios when indicating their landing and taking off. So there's signage going up to remind the pilots to do so. And an interesting statistic that Mr. reported on was that our fuel statistics show that there's been an increase in activity at the airport in the last year. And that's not counting aerial applicators.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from council? All right, I'll call for the vote on acceptance. All in favor? Kerry? Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is the Works and Utilities Department Report. City Manager?
Thanks, your worship. So we're, we're refer to Director Gilmore's report as circulated. I will just maybe want to highlight points four, six and seven as all those three applications have been filed and received with the ministry. So just so all of council is aware that we're in the queue there on all three, on the cap funding as well as the ICIP on the water main distribution as well as the ICIP on the landfill expansion. So hopefully we hear some good news within the next 60 days. They did indicate that they had extended the deadline on that further another six weeks, but that they were going to be reviewing them very early on in the month of April. So just as an update for that.
Okay. Any questions about that report? Counselor Mitchell?
Thank you, your worship. Couple quick comments. One, Director Gilmore's made a comment that we're gonna have some of this freezing snow and ice conditions solved within a week when it warms up permanently. And I thought that was bold of him seeing it snowing outside today. But one of the other questions I had was around the sidewalk project. And I'm just wondering if there, this is something we should review. I know that a lot of that funding was coming from our fuel tax. I suspect we're gonna have significantly less revenue next year. Our PST is gonna be down or our gas tax is gonna be down. I don't know the parameters around what we can use that for. I know that there is very strict parameters, but I wonder if we shouldn't look at considering at least scaling some of that back this year and, and planning potentially for maintaining some of those dollars for, for next year. But again, I'm not sure exactly what those dollars could be allocated to.
Yeah, I could probably speak to that, Counselor Mitchell. So basically, we are this Wednesday morning getting together as the senior admin team here to do a thorough review on, on that list of projects. Sandy's, Sandy's obviously got some work to do. Gerald's got some work to do. And, and I, I've been speaking with lots of city managers around the province. You know, it's, it's known to everybody already that the city of Virginia has been in contravention three times in a week with a couple of their capital projects going on right now as far as it relates to employees. So we're gonna have to consider all these logistics in the sidewalk project. We saw it last year here where it's quite a large crew that comes in and works very closely together. So all of these are gonna be looked at this weekend, and I hope to get a report out to, to you folks early next week.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none. Let's move into bylaws. And I have a resolution that reads as follows. That bylaw 2020-02, being a bylaw to amend the financial services fee bylaw to provide economic relief during the COVID-19 pandemic, be introduced and read a first time. I need a mover please. Counselor Holman's and second Counselor Mitchell? All in favor, all in favor? I was gonna carry it already. All in favor? Put your hand up. Kerry, thank you. I have a resolution that reads as follows, that bylaw 2020-02 be read a second time. Can I have a mover please? Counselor Mitchell? Okay, just a sec. And a seconder please. Counselor Phillips? Questions or comments? Doug, this isn't funny. Any questions or comments with respect to that resolution? All right, call for the vote, all in favor? Kerry, thank you. Resolution that reads bylaw 2020-02 be given three readings at this meeting. A mover, please. Counselor Mitchell? Seconder, Counselor Holman? All in favor? Carried unanimously, thank you. And finally, a resolution that reads that bylaw 2020-02 be read a third time and passed. A mover, please. Counselor Mitchell? Seconder, Counselor Holman? All in favor? Kerry, thank you. Next, I have a resolution that reads that bylaw 2020-03 being a bylaw to fix the municipal mill rate on taxable properties for the year 2020 be introduced and read a first time. A mover, please? Counselor Holman? Seconder? Counselor Mitchell? All in favor? Kerry? A resolution that bylaw 2020-03 be read a second time. A mover, please? Counselor Benson? Seconder? Counselor Terry? Questions or comments? All right, call for the vote. All in favor? Kerry, thank you. A resolution that bylaw 2020-03 be given three readings at this meeting. A mover, please? Counselor Holman? Seconder? Counselor Mitchell? All in favor? Carried unanimously, thank you. A resolution that reads that bylaw 2020-03 be read a third time and passed. A mover, please. Counselor Mitchell? Seconder? Counselor Holman? All in favor? Kerry, thank you. Okay, I have a resolution that reads as follows, bylaw that bylaw 2020-04 being a bylaw to provide for a base tax to be levied on taxable properties in the city of Malford be introduced and read a first time. All in favor? Kerry, thank you. Again, a resolution that reads
Excuse me, Rick. I believe we need a mover and a seconder for that first resolution.
Yeah, I guess you're right. Okay, sorry, let's back up to that. Counselor Holman is the mover. Seconder? Counselor Phillips? And we'll assume that we did this in the right order before, and it and it passed. And we'll move on to the second one that reads that bylaw 2020-04 be read a second time again. Okay, now we'll do this right. A mover? Counselor Terry? And a seconder? Counselor Benson? Questions or comments? I'll just make a comment that I believe the the base tax is still the same, nothing's being changed. Is that right, City Treasurer?
Nothing has changed from 2019.
Okay. Any questions? Hey, I'll call for the vote, all in favor? Kerry, thank you. I have a resolution that reads as follows, that bylaw 2020-04 be given three readings at this meeting. A mover, please? Counselor Phillips? A seconder, Counselor George? All in favor? Carried unanimously, thank you. And a resolution that reads that bylaw 2020-04 be read a third time and passed. A mover, please? Counselor Mitchell? And a seconder, Counselor Terry? All in favor? Counselor George, are you in favor? Apparently, we lost Counselor George again. Yes, we have lost Counselor George, he's now okay, we'll just wait, okay, Counselor George's hand is up, okay. Kerry, thank you. Geez, these bylaws are taking a long time. All right, moving into the next one, I have a resolution that reads as follows, that bylaw 2020-05 being a bylaw exempting certain property from taxation be introduced and read a first time. All in favor? Kerry, thank you.
Excuse me, your worship. Again, we need a mover and a seconder.
Oh, yeah, okay. We'll just do that vote again in a minute. I need a, okay, I've got Counselor Holman's moving it. Geez, this is complicated. Not really, it shouldn't be. And a seconder? Somebody put up your hand. Counselor Mitchell, you guys were both fighting for that one, but. Okay, let's do that again. All in favor? Vote again. All in favor? Okay, thank you. Boy, it's good to hear you're on the stall, Heather. All right, a resolution that reads that bylaw 2020-05 be read a second time. A mover, please? Counselor Mitchell? Seconder, Counselor Terry? Questions? Comments? Counselor Terry?
Yeah, I forget what some of these headings stand for at the top of this chart. IMPs and property, what do those two columns indicate?
Those are different types of evaluations or assessments. So there's the land, the improvement, and the property.
Improvement, okay. Yep, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Call for the vote, and I have got a mover and seconder this time, so all in put your hand up if you're favored. Good, Kerry, thank you. I have a resolution that bylaw 2020-05 be given three readings at this meeting after I get a mover and seconder, so a mover, please? Counselor Holman? Seconder, Counselor George? All in favor? Carried unanimously, thank you. The resolution reads that bylaw 2020-05 be read a third time and passed. A mover, please? Counselor Mitchell and Counselor Benson? All in favor? All in favor? Counselor George, are you in favor? Okay, Kerry, thank you. All right, thank God, it's the last one. All right. I have a resolution that reads as follows, that bylaw 2020-06 being a bylaw to amend the tax penalty bylaw to provide economic relief during the COVID-19 pandemic be introduced and read a first time. Mover, Counselor Holman? Seconder, Counselor Mitchell? All in favor? All in favor? Okay, Kerry, thank you. The resolution reads that bylaw 2020-06 be read a second time. A mover, please? Counselor Terry? A seconder, please. Counselor Phillips? Questions? Any questions? Counselor George? Counselor George, do you have a question?
No, I don't. I just can hardly understand it. It's sort of garbled that I sometimes I'm having my hand up when I shouldn't.
Okay, well, that's fine. Here, I'll try and talk louder, or I don't know if that's gonna help. So we're in the second reading of the resolution on the amending the tax penalty bylaw. Any questions? Any other questions from council before we vote on it? This is the second reading? Okay, I'll call for the vote on second reading. All in favor? Kerry, thank you. The resolution reads that bylaw 2020-06 be given three readings at this meeting. A mover, please? Counselor Benson? Counselor George? All in favor? Carried unanimously, thank you. And the resolution reads that bylaw 2020-06 be read a third time and passed. A mover, please? Counselor Mitchell? Seconder? Counselor Holman? All in favor? Kerry, thank you. Okay. Announcement, anybody got any? Put up your hand if you have some. Counselor Holman?
Yeah, I just wanted to encourage people to support our local businesses wherever they can during this tough time. A lot of things have had to go online, and I know this past week I had great service from Ken Madraga and everybody over at Melody Motors, so wherever we can, you know, we should band together, pull together and support local and help each other through this tough time.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or any other comments, I should say? Counselor Phillips?
I'd also like to make a comment. I'd like to really commend our businesses in town, especially our grocery stores who have been delivering groceries. Actually, all of the businesses have made it have made it so much easier to continue to purchase stuff without having any contact with them. I think they're phenomenal, and I'm just so grateful that we have them in our community, and I would just like to really encourage everybody to stay home and to continue what we're doing, and hopefully in the next few weeks, we will see things level out and just stress how important it is for our community to keep it safe, and also thank you to our staff as well.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Counselor Holman?
Yeah, I just want to echo that sentiment towards our administration at City Hall. I think you guys are doing a great job, and thanks for keeping us in the know, and I just encourage residents when they have issues as well. Just to remain respectful in their correspondence with city administration, you know, there's a lot, a lot going on right now, and you know, they're gonna try to help you as best they can, but please understand that, you know, some of the logistics are a little bit different right now, so thanks very much to city administration.
Good comment. Anything else? All right, that goes without saying, you know, this is absolutely a trying time. Things are not normal, but I would also like to commend our citizens for the part they've been doing with respect to social distancing. For the most part, it's been pretty good, and I think that's evidenced by the results we're seeing in our healthcare system at this time. So hopefully that continues because the last thing we want is to see any cases within our city itself, and hopefully the cases within the surrounding area decrease as well, so that they're not increasing exponentially, so. So kudos to our citizens for their efforts and their patience, I'll say. Counselor Mitchell?
I guess I'd just like to follow on your comment a little bit too with regards to the planking of the curve and us not having any confirmed cases in our community. Like, it's really any confirmed cases in our community. I think it's really important that people don't take that as it's not there, because it is there. I guarantee that there are carriers within our community. People need to be vigilant. People need to stay home. And the modeling has been true so far. If you've seen it in the news, the cases are continuing to go up. We have been able to stop the exponential growth, but they're out there. And to remain vigilant, sooner we can keep that curve flat, the sooner we can get on with our lives, so.
Yeah, thanks for that comment. Apparently, there are carriers that don't exhibit the symptoms. Is that true?
Very much true, and it's a it's an alarming percentage, so just be vigilant.
Okay, thank you for that. Anything else? Director Danberg?
Yeah, no, thanks, Mayor. I'll just say, I guess, pay it forward to, you know, the S H A as well as the ministry. They've done a great job working with the 16 cities across the province. And I know for for myself, it's been it's been great to be in the loop of things. So we're going to do our Wednesday council Zoom session. If anybody has any questions in advance, I'd ask for you to please email me. But, you know, we're on the phone every Tuesday, Thursday now with both the ministry and City Mayor's caucus, and we hope to continue to provide you updates here on a weekly basis.
Okay, thank you. And I guess I would be, well, remiss, I'll say, if I didn't throw a special thank you to Ryan Philipation, because my understanding is that he has been very, very busy in his job and putting in an extra effort. So I'll send kudos out to him. Okay. With that, we're going to move into the last resolution tonight, which reads that this meeting be adjourned. A mover please? Okay, everybody wants to move that one. So we'll say Counsel George, seconded by Counsel Terry. And all in favor? Terry, thank you. Well, it was quite an-